Twenty twenty three, special call council meeting for the city of Lake City to order. If anyone would stand for the pledge of allegiance or make standing for the invitation to be given by Reverend Dr. Gray.
I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, united in this world, with liberty and justice for all.
Precious heavenly father, as we come before you this evening, we first just want to thank you for such a beautiful day. We also want to thank you for all the ways in which you have watched out for us through this day, waking us up this morning, sending us on our way, dear Lord, opening our eyes to those who we can help and letting us have the strength to help those that are in need of help. So precious heavenly father, as we come into this meeting, we ask that you pour out your holy spirit upon our hearts and allow us to make wise decisions that are in concert with your thoughts. We ask that we be bold enough, dear Lord, to do what is right, to be righteous among what we say in our hearts and our minds. And Lord, that any decision that we make this morning at this afternoon, that any decision that we make is a decision that will bring glory and honor to you and to help this city to rise to the heights of what it can be, one of the best cities in this nation. All this, I pray, in your precious son's name and through his blood, let all of us who love the Lord say together, amen.
Ms. Artie, turn the roll.
Mr. Dernigan?
Here.
Mr. Hill?
Here.
Ms. Young?
Here.
Mr. Sampson?
Here.
Mayor Witt?
Here.
Mr. Dowell?
Here.
Mr. Cannon?
Here.
Chief Miles?
Here.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, the Lake City Council has opened its public meetings since October sixty eighth. City code has prohibited any person from making personal and pertinent or slanderous remarks. And I want to stop there and remind everybody, there will be no personal and pertinent or slanderous remarks tonight. It'll be a civil meeting, and it'll be limited to three men, comments, or becoming boisterous or aggressing the council. Yet they are making audible comments from the audience, causing boisterous conduct. Such conduct will not be tolerated. There's only one approved manner of addressing the council, that is to be recognized and then speak with the podium. As a reminder, persons are not to openly carry a handgun or carry a concealed weapon or firearm while they're governing by your team. Okay, the first item is approval of the agenda.
So, mayor.
Motion, Senator, approve the agenda as published on the favor side.
Aye.
opposed, uh, thank you. At this time, Mr. Dowell wanted to make some comments.
Uh, yeah, mayor, I appreciate it. Uh, I wanted to address, uh, some comments that have been, uh, said concerning some of my staff, uh, being unqualified. Um, it seems to be a repeating thing with certain individuals to make these comments. Uh, let me reiterate to anybody that's listening, uh, Lake City staff and its employees are the most qualified you will find anywhere. They're the most dedicated and knowledgeable that you'll find anywhere. And anybody that has an issue with one of them needs to come see me instead of making comments. The city of Lake City is in the best position, in my thoughts, in a long time. And that's due to the great knowledge and dedication that this staff has, all members, all team members, directors on down. It's all one big team. This city is in by no means in bad shape. There is no need for any knee jerk reactions and for people to say that we don't have anyone qualified to run this city is bull. Mr. Johnson is fully qualified to run this city. Mr. Johnson is well versed in the employees, the personnel, the projects, and everything that we're doing. And for anybody to say other than that is just misguided and misinformed. Now, in the past, yes, when it was transition, there was issues. And when we talk about requirements, let's look at some of the past assistant city managers and some of the past city managers. What did them requirements get you? So, council, I just ask that when you look at this and you make these decisions, that you look at what is best for the city of Lake City, its citizens, who aren't going to miss any services with the staff that we have and the individuals that you have here that can run this city. I find it highly offensive that anyone would say that Mr. Johnson is not qualified. Requirements and qualifications are two different things. You can have all the requirements in the world and not be able to do the job. We've seen that in the past. And I just ask this council not to be in any big hurry or no push. This city is in great shape with the personnel that you have, that's not going to miss a beat with the customers, the citizens, any services that we offer. And I ask you to look at what you have on staff, look at what you want to change and make those changes, but do not make any knee jerk reactions. If you have plenty of time to make these decisions, you have someone very, very qualified to take over and run this city. And that's basically all I wanted to say, mayor, and to thank all of the staff for everything that they've ever done.
Thank you. Uh, the first public comments, Cassie Ballard.
Good afternoon, hi, my name is Cassie. Um, I'm actually here about an event that we're going to be having on October seventh at the Florida Gateway Pro Rodeo. Um, what we've done is we've, we've tried to combine all of the, the churches and the faith-based community in Columbia County in Lake City to come together for one day. Um, I, I have no opinion on who runs the city, but I will say that there's no denying some of the hardships that our city has faced. I'm a native here, I'm born and raised here. Um, you know, we've had some tragic things happen here and my belief is that there is only one person we can go to, one being that we can go to regarding this matter that we're facing today in Lake City, and that is God. So what we have decided to do is come together and bring all of the churches to think, there's roughly like, was it fifty-three, fifty-eight churches in Lake City? And what we're trying to do is reach out to all of them, bring them together for this day to unite at the rodeo arena, to have a day of worship. We've had, we have many different churches coming together from the hours of three to ten P M. to have worship service. We have people coming, um, guest speakers, pastors from even other areas such as Jasper coming to speak a word over our town, um, encouraging words, prayer. Um, we have a lot of local businesses coming, doctors' offices, um, to set up booths at this event. Um, we have children's area with bounce houses and face painting and snow cones and just fun for family fellowship in the community. It's a free event, it's open to the public. We have numerous, um, food trucks coming and we just want to come up and invite you guys to be a part of that and congregation that you're a part of, all cultures, all denominations to come be a part of this day, and that's really what we're here for today.
Thank you.
And what was that date?
October seventh.
What was the name of your organization?
Um, I'm actually, I own, um, a local insurance, health insurance agency here in town. We've owned it for a little over ten years. I serviced roughly six thousand or more individuals in this area for the last ten years alongside my husband. So, we, um, usually around this time, we have an event in our office that kind of caters to our clients. But this year, God just put it on my heart to open it to the community to try to unite Lake City, and that's what, what we're hoping to do.
I got, I got a question as well. Um, so this, this October end is for all denominations.
All denominations.
Uh, with, with, with that being said, uh, have you reached out to several different churches, uh?
Oh, yes, we have a list.
I was gonna say, make sure we reach out to, the, the Reverend right behind you there. She is the, uh, pastor, uh, of one of the great churches here that, you know, a lot of us didn't raise up, uh, in that area. So she would be, uh, very, very good contact.
Okay.
Uh, of, of course, uh, uh, my church is, uh, Soul's Harbor, and, uh, Mr. Dowell, he's sitting right there behind you there. He could, he could definitely give you some information on that. And there's, there's several other churches, I'm just pointing out the churches that, uh, that I have, uh, I have knowledge of that's in here now.
Okay.
And I'm hoping and praying that, uh, that event, uh, will bring, uh, people together and, uh, we will stop all this, uh, uh, violence. Uh, and anything that, uh, we could do as a council, when you put on these events, please advise and, you know, let us know. And I'm so grateful and thankful that you had the nerve and the courage to come up and speak and tell us about these events. A lot of times the police officers, uh, they don't know about the events, the deputies, they don't know about the events. So, uh, you coming up and having the courage to come up and tell us about the event, that speaks high regards on your behalf. So, I'm hoping and praying that this is a successful, uh, event.
Thank you. We have reached out to local law enforcement, we've invited, um, sheriff's department will be there. Still waiting on the Lake City Police Department to get back to me whether they'll be here or not. Um, it's.
They'll be there, they're, they're, he's, he's shaking his head, but he said they'll be there.
Okay, um, and it's called the Lake City, um, the Lake City Fall Worship Festival. We hope to make this an annual thing, and my company is sponsoring it this first year. Um, but I'll gladly sponsor it every year because I do believe this is something Lake City desperately needs.
Thank you very much, ma'am, we really appreciate you.
All right, Mr. Warren.
Mayor, council, uh, Sylvester One, nine thirty, northeast, Joe Coney. On my way up, uh, I was thinking about, uh, some verbiage that I was gonna use as it relates to Paul. Wasn't gonna necessarily be the normal verb which I use, I wanted it to be very dependent in place, because sometimes I just like talking to you like that, Paul. But, um, you mentioned something about a knee jerk reaction, and I agree. And, um, I find that your resignation to be a knee jerk reaction. And let me tell you why, Paul, and council, and those that are listening. I don't have a photographic memory, Paul, but I have what is called an informational memory. It's kind of like a photographic memory, but it just retains a lot of information. And I remember that there is this young black lady that was the interim city manager, she had been held on, her name was Amy Fields. And I remember that this council, amongst a few people who are no longer up there, wanted to terminate her. And you came up to the same podium where I'm standing at, and you defended her. You didn't even know her probably two or three months, but you said you liked the way that she was treating employees. And you told the council, if they terminated her, you would quit. You were willing to put your job on the line for one black woman that you had just met, no longer than ninety days. And I sit around, I look at all the employees that you've known for decades, that look up to you, you've brought them morale up. And my question begins to be, how could you sacrifice yourself for one person? But you're not willing to sacrifice yourself for three hundred people who lives you changed, who jobs you holding to balance depending on what happens tonight or not with your resignation? And I just wonder whether or not you've ever thought about that? And if you would, Mr. Dowell, I would love to read something from the great prophet. Uh, went to Bible college, a lot of people don't know that. Uh, but there's a great prophet, and you know, his name was, uh, Joseph Smith. Does it ring a bell? Prophet Joseph Smith said this, and I take my seat after I read this to you, Paul. It said, "The Lord gave us power in proportion to the work to be done, and strength according to the race set before us, and grace and help as our needs require." Written by Prophet Joseph Smith. Thank you.
Mr. Bowden?
Good evening, mayor, council, doing our volume, loving to visit your office, Baskin Norris Drive. Maril, Mariah, Regina Smith, forever clear. We must remember to say her name. I brought her name, mayor, but I know you don't look at the news. Over in Jacksonville, if you look at the news, they were shooting over the Big Mountains. Four people shot, three died, one of those, three years old. Couple days later, somebody was killed out on the beach, uh, was shooting. Dead, written in the paper, telling us somebody died, they tell us dead off from gunpowder. I bring that up, mayor, because in Jacksonville, they went from talking about a three-year-old child that was killed on Saturday or Sunday, and on Monday had moved on to another story. Jacksonville has seen so much killing, they've become numb to it. My hope and my prayer is, man, in our city, we won't become so numb to violence that we just move on and forget about what's happening around us. And so from time to time, I'm gonna get, I'm gonna mention her name, I'm gonna mention her name until that's suggested, bro, in this community, to our family and, and, and for her. And so we always, always remember that Mariah was twelve years old, and she was killed on Long Street, and we should never forget that. And we should always, I hope we never become numb to that. Not far, we don't want to say, man, I put, I want to speak to other issues on the agenda. Just to follow up on, uh, what Mr. Warren was saying. I said to the last city manager, sir, in fact, I, I, I attended every meeting we had, it was a long, drawn-out process. And, and I hope that we not go through that process anytime soon. You know, I don't have any control over what Mr. Dowell is doing, but I know I read this now, he said it's my intent, uh, to resign. My hope and prayer that on tonight, he might reconsider that as an intent and maybe consider unintended to do it at this point in time. I would think that after coming up with a balanced budget, Mr. Dowell, that you want to hang around if you, if you could, just to see that, get it through it, and just see what you can reduce over this year's time. Uh, I don't know all the in and out of the, uh, city government, but I know this, I have not heard any serious complaints about your, uh, operation. Employees seem to be happy, uh, the city is still moving along, there is emergency employees coming to town. And I agree with you that the city is where it is because of employees. And employees are good when they got somebody at the head that's, that's leading them. A good football team is only as good as its players, but if they have a bad coach, then a good football team is not going to be anything. That's why when a football team, uh, uh, a calendar, like, uh, uh, a coach failed in a school, the Luna have no problem. University of Florida got a bad coach, he can have his twenty million dollars on his contract, but the Luna, you gotta go. It gotta go. Well, that's not the case here. Uh, I would hope that if there's any desire for Mr. Dowell to stay, that he would, but you know, I agree that it shouldn't be a knee jerk, uh, decision made. And I look forward to addressing issues on the agenda if we get to that.
Thank you. Okay, moving over to new business, we have city council resolution number twenty twenty-three dash one one two. Yeah, would you read it like, uh?
Resi- city resolution number twenty twenty-three dash one one two. Resolution of the city council, the city of Lake City, Florida, accepting the resignation of Paul Dowell, the city manager, and providing for an effective date.
And, hold on. Did you want to speak?
Mayor, I would just reiterate as to what I said early, um, to, uh, Mr. Dowell. Um, I do, I would find it very selfish, uh, for a guy such as himself, where he's come from, where he's built himself up from, where he's built his staff up from, the new people that he's brought on, and to leave them in a vulnerable state, uh, I would find it very selfish. I think the prophet Joseph Smith would agree with me, and I think, uh, Mr. Dowell, uh, should do the right thing. Uh, because there's no way that he can know the prophet and not do the right thing, in my opinion. And that would be to make the sacrifice and ride it out and withdraw his intent. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Bowden?
At the risk of being redundant, mayor, I would only say that, uh, if a resolution before the city council, and since I'm Lake City, Mr. Dowell did my whole life here, uh, served on city council sixteen years. I don't know of any city manager where I've placed the barrier of the city and its employees higher than you have. So it's as integrated, you can reconsider how certainly encourage you to do that, however, I respect your decision, whatever it may be. And if that's your decision, so be it.
Okay. All right, council, we have city council resolution twenty twenty-three dash one one two. We have a motion. Anybody gonna make a motion, anybody that?
Mr. Mayor, I have to say something. Mr. Dowell, with, with this, with that motion being on the floor, I hope this says something to you about, excuse me, about you, um, about this, this council member. Can't speak for the rest of them, but this council member would like for you to stay. Um, I don't know, you and I had a conversation a few months ago, and again, I won't disclose that conversation. Um, but I would appreciate, um, if you would stay, consider staying.
Mr. Mayor, I've got a, a couple of things, uh, on, on that as, as well. Um, it's, 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 it's kind of hard. Uh, you know, uh, Mr. Dowell has left an impact, not only on the citizens, uh, around, uh, his employees, but he's also made an impact on me, uh, as well. And, uh, and I, I would definitely love to see him stay. Uh, uh, and, and instead of a resignation, I'd like to see him have an evaluation. Uh, 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 of course, uh, uh, mayor, uh, you, 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 you must, uh, as, as though, give answer, but about it, uh, get control of the, of the meetings that we, that, that come before us, the people, the individuals. Uh, there's no, uh, two strikes, there's no three strikes and you're out, you get one strike and you're done. Uh, also, um, you know, we, uh, you, you know, Mr. Dowell, we, he, he wears, uh, several hats. And when you wear several different hats and, uh, everybody seemed to, uh, to, uh, to get along and we, and we got the city going in the right direction. Um, I, I, I would say that, uh, you, you, we have to pay for that, you know? Uh, uh, we, I, I remember when we was just talking about, uh, he was at this, this amount, and six months later, we'll do an evaluation. Uh, that didn't happen, and here we are in the tenth month and no, uh, evaluation on Mr. Dowell. Uh, uh, I, I think that if, uh, we, we, we pay Mr. Dowell the, uh, uh, the funding that we have in other areas that we, uh, for example, I think they had a utility, um, uh, director, uh, that, that money is, is in the budget and, and as well as the insurance plan, you know? So, I, I just think that if we had, um, if we pay Mr. Dowell what, uh, he's looking for, I think, I think we have a better shot at keeping Mr. Dowell here. Uh, I'm not gonna make the motion to, uh, approve that resolution based on that. Uh, not only that, uh, I can say that, uh, uh, I want, let, let's, let's, let Mr. Dowell run this city the way it's supposed to be. Uh, because Mr. Dowell keeps us out of trouble. Uh, he, he, he knows the in and, in and out of our city government. He knows about procurement. Uh, so i- if, if, if we try to micromanage him, and which some of us do, uh, that's not gonna, that's not gonna fly well with him, me, uh, the citizens of this community. So if we allow Mr. Dowell to not be, uh, micromanaged, I'm pretty sure that he will continue to do the job that he's doing. I say that to say this, uh, I, I noticed on number three, uh, we haven't even got there yet, but, uh, that's just a good example of, uh, Mr. Sampson got some very, very good thoughts and what we should do, how we should look for this, and how many weeks it should be, and blah, blah, blah. Uh, that, that doesn't sit well with me. That's telling me that, uh, we're trying to micromanage, uh, the system, uh, personnel, uh, if you would say. Uh, but, and, and I know that's probably not his intentions, or, uh, maybe he's, uh, uh, he's got aspirations of being the mayor, but I know that's not his intentions. Uh, and again, great ideas.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to respond to that. He mentioned me in the comment.
Yes, okay.
Normally, we have a comment back and forth when you mention somebody.
Right, but you like to have a comment.
I would, so, actually, when I looked at Mr. Dernigan, just to get back to that, because you mentioned it right there.
Yes, sir.
It's nothing to do with micromanagement, it has to do with having a plan. And so when we looked at this, we come together, if we don't have a plan, um, then we're planning to fail.
Yes, sir.
And so anybody's willing to put together a plan can put a plan in, but, but I would thought we'd discuss that point through.
Yes.
But, but, you know, I'm not micromanaging anybody.
Okay, uh, well, well, again, you know, you have an opinion.
Well, that's your opinion.
That's, that's just my opinion.
So that's your opinion.
Yeah, that's all.
Yeah, it's just, just clarifying an opinion.
Got it, got it. Again, uh, I would like to see, uh, if, if I have an opinion on something, I take it to the city manager, and I'm pretty sure that city manager and Mr. Johnson can definitely keep us out of, uh, harm's way. Uh, a, a lot of times, uh, I, I don't feel comfortable, uh, 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 th- these meetings are getting way out of hand, okay? Uh, we're, we're trying everything we can, uh, to get it back under control, because it's, it seemed to be very, very difficult to do that. That's why I addressed the mayor, and he didn't make any comments, uh, uh, about that as well. So, uh, you know, you, you, it seemed like I'm talking in circles. It was just my turn, uh, to speak on our decision-making on Mr. Paul Dowell and assistant city manager Dee Johnson. They doing a very, very good job at this time, and I think that if we keep them on board, we pay them, but what they're doing, I think we can move forward and not even worry about, uh, uh, six months down the road, if we looking for a city manager or assistant city manager, no, we're not looking for that, we got the right people in the right places. So, Mr. Dowell, if you would, uh, reconsider your stance for the citizens of this community that you love. That's all I have to say. Thank you, mayor.
Yes, um, please, and thank you. Um, I know we've heard a lot just in the last few minutes.
You speak up, please.
I'm, I know we've heard a lot just in the last few minutes. Um, but if I'm in order, I would like to ask Mr. Dowell a question, um, mayor, if that's okay.
You can answer it, if, I, I would have him answer it if he would do it.
Understood, okay. Um, Mr. Dowell, what, what brought you to the decision, if it, if, if it's okay? You don't have to answer if you don't feel comfortable, I don't want to get into your personal space. But I know many people are wanting to know the answer, and, and with the last statements that brought on quite a bit of assumptions, I'm, I'm sharing people's minds. What brought you to the decision of your intent, um, to resign from the position of Lake City city manager?
Well, Ms. Young, I won't address the personal aspect of it, uh, but I will address the other part of it. It's basically the, uh, dysfunction of the council. You asked several meetings, you asked several months. Uh, bypassing city administration, um, for agenda items, things that need to be discussed with myself or Mr. Johnson, to be able to be vetted, to make sure that nothing gets to the council and gets an action item on it that we have to take in, go backwards to fulfill, and also to make sure that none of the violations affect the city council. That's our job, is to protect the council, to make sure that anything and everything that comes before you is vetted in the right process through procurement, through finance, through everything else, and there's no ethical violations or there's no legal violations.
So what I'm hearing, um, and we, we all say you're doing an awesome job, um, but you're not, you're not feeling that you do an awesome, um, job because you're kind of wearing your space. you're not feeling that you do an awesome, um, job because you're kind of wearing your space. Um, people, there's some things going on that's hindering you from fulfilling your responsibilities as city manager, is that what you're saying?
Yes, ma'am.
So what can we do? We, hopefully, we can do something tonight that will move you to, um, reconsider, um, your resignation. Is there something we can do tonight?
Ms. Young, like I expressed to, um, some individuals, the overall operation of the city, the day-to-day operation is not an issue because the city has outstanding, uh, team members. But it all starts with the top, and it is correct that the top of the chart is the citizens. The citizens come to you all for things that, you know, they'd like to see happen. It's you all's job is to govern anybody, to come up with policies, procedures, and things of that nature, to pass on to administration so we can implement it for you. When we get into the fact, or the point to where the council is getting involved in day-to-day operations, to that point, you're no longer needing the city administration, the, uh, city council. Basically, the city council at that point is basically just the governing body and also the administration side of it. Uh, me and Mr. Johnson work well as a team. Uh, our goal is to take the burden off of you all. If you have a citizen come to you that wants something done, needs something, that information needs to be passed on to us so we can get the information and pass it back to you so you can make a decision on whether or not you want to pursue it. And that's what we, uh, are trying to do, but when that process is bypassed, we get sidelined at the, uh, fifty-yard line, trying to come up and say, well, to which duration that we need to go. We have to find a way to fund it, find a way to make sure it's legal, make sure it meets, uh, all the ethical challenges. So that puts a heavy burden on the administration when things come up on the agenda that hasn't went through me and Mr. Johnson.
So, so my question is, if these things are met, would you just name? These are the things that you would like to see happen because this is your, um, carrying out your city manager position. In the process, you just stated. And if, if this happens, if we, as a council, see eye to eye with you on this issue, is there reconsideration?
Well, Ms. Young, whether or not I stay or not, this is something that's gonna have to be addressed for the next individual that comes in, because they're not gonna be successful either. Uh, I don't try to, my job is not to tell the council what to do. My job is to offer opinion and give guidance to help, uh, facilitate what you all need to do for the community. Each one of you represent, other than the mayor, a certain district. Those districts need to contact you for things that they need. And it has to be understood, uh, you're not always gonna get a win on everything. Uh, each council member needs to, uh, be able to have something that they can get accomplished. Uh, and whether or not, like I said, whether or not I stay or go, those will have, these issues will need to be addressed for anybody that comes into the disposition, because if it's not, they're not gonna be able to be suc- successful.
So, and, and I, I hear what you're saying, we want a microwave, answer, we want a microwave response. We, we're not going through the proper protocol, proper pro- the complete process to get to, um, what we are requesting. I believe I said that, kinda brought that to light once, is that right?
Yes, ma'am.
I would just like to hear what all the council has to say about that.
Mr. Mayor, I've not yet commented yet.
Go ahead.
Mr. Dow, I think, um, the discussion we had, or you had on September fifth, when you weren't here, but you were on the speaker, I think that speaks to your decision quite a bit, when you go back to that. Uh, just what you were just conveying, if you go back to that agenda, we had three council people put on four different items, no, I'm sorry, five different items, that I don't think went through you guys at all. Everything from a drugstore coming in that's not been vetted, to any matics funding, to the chamber funding, and none of that went through staff. So I understand how you guys were very, um, upset about that. And I think one of the things that's, that's important is having that communication. I know one thing I like to do when there's something we wanna do, I like to meet with you and Dee and see what your views are on it, like when we're working on, for example, the cart ordinance and the different ordinances. It takes a while to learn the process, 'cause I know before, we didn't have that process, and it gets messy. I think if we had a process in place where when you wanna do something, it goes to staff to see what the feasibility is, that, that to me, I don't, the headache you have from that, just that one meeting, and then it come, the very next meeting, you're getting questioned about practices with an employee in a letter, I know the stress is there, and then the other thing is, like you and I discussed on the phone, I will mention this, I'm not gonna go into detail on that conversation, but if the mayor would run the meeting by the rules, I think that would take stress off of administration. You are the only one that can run the meeting. But I think the frustration we're allowing on these employees is really unfair.
I agree.
And so I think as part of this board, we need to hold the chair accountable on the meeting for decorum. And I'm committed to doing that, um, and I'm committed to running anything through administration, but or for it would be addressed at a council level. I don't think we should do anything with notice and action without some kind of review by administration. Um, we just throw things against the wall and say, let's just do this or that, and no one's even looked at it. And then, you know, Mr. Turnigan had an item on that, I mean, Mr. Hill, Ms. Young, we all have, had that in the past. That, we, this group, the five of us, we're the ones that are, um, causing the stress on the, on the city. At the podium, and then the decisions we make, it just call and put something on the agenda. And so I think if, if, um, I'm understanding correctly, if we could commit to running things through Mr. Dow, I don't know, now, I know, it's a decision is very personal. It's your decision, obviously. I, I mean, if there could be some kind of discussion of how things are presented, instead of just throwing stuff on the agenda that had some kind of vetting, I think no matter who's sitting in your chair, that would be helpful. Um, I, I, I know the frustration that you have through that is just, it's just unreal. I, I don't know how you manage that, when you just get to a meeting, and you don't know where we're going with it. So, um, in my opinion, that would be the one thing I would say. Do you have any, um, idea if you would be willing to stay any longer, um, if things could be addressed, or or would you consider it, or?
Well, Mr. Sampson, I'm always, I'm a person not considering anything, but I know we've had these discussions before, and nothing really ever comes out of them. It's like, we have a meeting to have another meeting to talk about something different, so, um, you know, I really don't see, unless the council are really committed to, but then two months, three months down the road, we're back to the same, you know, position.
Mayor, now, uh, with all the discussion, all, and I know you've got, uh, your own, uh, things in making this decision, but, uh, instead of just saying, hey, I'm not gonna do it, at least give us a couple of months to try to see if we can get the ship right, and see how, and let you see how it works with it, maybe you, uh, address your issues and hold us accountable, then we gonna run the meetings, we gonna be civil, or we gonna have empty rooms. I heard it, uh. And, and, and I know it's a tough decision to put on you tonight, if you wanna say, hey, give me your money next Monday, I, I'm sure, uh, recognize that, and I'll, but, uh, tell it, how we feel.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I'm.
Um, I, I, I'm, uh, to piggyback off what Mr. Sampson said, um, uh, I am committed to doing it, uh, the right way. And I, I don't think it takes two months, three months to get a meeting, or for us to go through, uh, uh, the proper channels to get things vetted. Uh, I don't think it takes that long. I think by the next meeting, even this meeting, you know, uh, this is the way meetings should be. And if you just take control and, uh, you probably gavel down, and have that person, uh, exit group, whoever's out there, I think it would definitely, uh, take a lot off of Mr. Dow. And, uh, I'm, I am committed to that. I, I know, but Anton Sampson.
Go ahead, go ahead, talk. And if I could make one more comment, and I think if, if the council members would commit to meeting with Mr. Dow, Mr. Johnson, on a regular basis, if, I mean, I know we probably all do already, but maybe a more formalized structure, that might be something that would take, um, some improvement as well. I know, I think when we have, uh, more regular meetings, that I think that reduces the chance of things just getting thrown on the agenda. But I think the idea of just sponsoring stuff onto the agenda that, you know, someone in the community wants, I think that needs to go away. That's, that's something that's just not good practice for, no matter, no matter what Mr. Dow decides, if it's Dee or whoever's sitting in that chair, it's just not a good practice.
If it's an emergency, I'd mention council, Mr. Dow. About it, yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
So, so going back to what we were talking to Mr. Dow about, not to let you on the spot, but would you, um, consider seeing how things would go for a short term, or what's your? Yeah, I mean, maybe it's not a matter you can make that kind of decision like that.
And, and, excuse me, Mr. Dow, in saying that, um, Mr. Turnigan touched on his evaluation. Um, I think we're well past six months on his evaluation. Which I don't believe you have a problem with, uh, getting a bad evaluation. If that, you know, if you could take that into consideration, your evaluation, uh, or, or continue to be the city manager of Lake City, uh, I just hope that you just, just stay.
Thank you, sir.
And I, I would just like to say, I really didn't finish my, um, what I was saying. But, um, Mr. Dow, you're very detailed in your, your craft, if I can call it that. Um, and you know, every great craftsman like to look around and admire his own work. And I just, I just ask that you just stay around and watch your, your work. Watch the production, watch how it flourishes. Every great craftsman wants to do that. So, not taking away from if you, if there's any personal, I, I, I want it to be your decision. Um, but I certainly would like for you to reconsider, um, this resignation. We certainly appreciate you. I would appreciate it from day one. And I know I'm in your office a lot, I'm learning, still learning, I feel like I'll never learn everything. But I need you. So, if you would just please reconsider. And you have a great sideboard.
Mr. Hill?
Mr. Johnson is, is, I'm sure he's great help for you. And I just, um, I enjoy and I admire you to working together, and I would definitely hate to see that separation happen.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to table City Council Resolution Twenty Twenty-Three Dash One One Two.
Second.
Motion sent at the table, Resolution Twenty Twenty-Three One One Two. It's actually come through.
Mr. Sampson?
Yes.
Mr. Turnigan?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Mayor, with?
Yes. Now, with that, I don't see anything along to the other processes tonight. That's a foreword to start with, can't advertise anything. Everybody ready?
Agreed.
Make the motion to adjourn.
A second.
Mr. Turnigan? Hi?
Oh, by the way, Mayor.